Hello ladies and welcome to the Book of Obadiah Bible Study Session 1. So we're trying this format now. The streaming during the actual Bible study was just having problem after problem after problem, so we're trying this route. Also, I want to go ahead and give this apology upfront. I'm in the throes of allergy season, so I will probably be wiping my eyes like I need to right now constantly through this video, so sorry. But this is not snot, I swear. That would be nasty to show that on camera. It's just eye weeping. It's tears. Okay, so Obadiah, the shortest book in the Old Testament, but I was mistaken when I started studying it. I was thinking, "Oh yeah, we can do this in one evening." No. It has a lot of background that we need to cover to explain a lot of the stuff in it, so we will be making this into two sessions, possibly three if something comes up that we need to camp out and discuss, discuss, excuse me, in the live class. But anyway, if you want us to, if you ever want to join us, if you ever want to join us, we meet on Wednesdays at 7:00 PM Mountain at Faith Baptist Church in Leighton, Utah. Send me an email if you'd like more information about coming to visit this Bible study in person or our worship service that's being held at the same time. My email is wordjules@gmail.com. All right, now actually to begin Obadiah, we're actually going to move over to another Old Testament book, Malachi. So we're going to be in the Book of Malachi, Chapter 1, Verses 2 and 3, which says, and I may have to put my reading glasses on from time to time, just so you know, "I have loved you," saith the Lord, "yet ye say, 'Where hast thou loved us? Was not Esau Jacob's brother?' saith the Lord. Yet I loved Jacob, and I hated Esau, and laid his mountains and his heritage waste for the dragons of the wilderness." That's pretty tough talk, isn't it? Why would God say He hates someone? Isn't that rather harsh? Maybe the word hate back then in the Hebrew form or Aramaic form, Aramaic, I can't say that word. Anyway, maybe back then the word didn't mean the same as way we use it today when we say something, we hate someone or we hate something. Guess what? It means the same. God is literally saying He hates Esau. Now, before we start judging God about that, we tend to be, we need to recognize that we tend to be uncomfortable with God showing emotions that we deem as negative or inappropriate for us to have. And for us to have these emotions like hate, or in the Bible talks about Him being a jealous God, they are negative, but we're not God. So we can't apply the same standard that fits us to the thrice holy God, okay? We have to just remember He is holy. He is allowed to have any emotion He wants, y'all, okay? But just remember, well, another thing, we are in linear time, so we can only move forward in time. We can't go back. We can't be in more than one spot at one time. But God is not confined to the linear constraints of time. He's in all time. He's in past, present, and future. The Bible tells us He inhabits eternity. So it means He's already been there. He already knew when He wrote these words. Had Obadiah say these things? Had Malachi penned these things? He knew the choices Esau would make because he'd already been in the present even before it had ever happened. He'd been in the future, excuse me, he'd been in the future before it even happened in the present time. Okay, so let me kind of try to state that better than I did. God can be in the past, present, and future, and He is. It says He inhabits eternity, okay? He already knew because He was already in the future. He already knew the choices Esau was going to make. It wasn't like He assigned Esau to be this person that He's just gonna hate him, okay? He was in the future. He saw the choices that Esau made. We all have choices, okay? And God knows the choices we're going to make. He's not assigning us to make us have that choice. So Esau was still always at any time eligible for God's grace, just like the rest of us. We know He was the twin brother of Jacob, and it wasn't that Jacob was so perfect that God loved him because we know if you read in Genesis, Jacob is a bit of a weasel, okay? The issues with Jacob and Esau stem from their parents picking favorites. Don't pick favorites of your children, hmm, okay? Now, Jacob was far from perfect. He did a lot of things wrong, but he would repent, and he would have a relationship with the Lord. We don't really have evidence in the Bible that Esau really chose that route. Esau usually did things his way and in his timing. Bottom line, that's prideful, okay? That's basically following the teachings of Satan. So, um, Esau was about instant gratification. They were not a poor family, and yet he comes in and says, "I'm so hungry. I'm starving. I'm dying." No, he wasn't, he wasn't starving. He wasn't to the point of death. They had, they had plenty of provisions in this family. He was just really hungry, and in that haste, Jacob, being a weasel at this point, told him, "Okay, I'll give you some of this food I'm making if you give me your birthright." Now, this is a huge insult to God because the birthright was not something you just threw away for a bowl of beans or lentils or whatever it was. The, the birthright was something very important in their culture. It also was like an unofficial position of priesthood for the family. So there's more to it than just Esau thrown away. He's really having no regard for the plan that God wanted him to lay out. Now, God already knew he was gonna choose this. That's why it says that the younger would serve the older in the Esau also did not honor God's command to not intermarry. Now, in the Old Testament, you see commands about not marrying other people groups. I don't want to use the word race because we're all the same human race. I'm talking about people groups, different cultures, different bloodlines. God did give these commands. It was not because, well, He was racist like we say today. It was because He was trying to keep them from marrying into cultures that worshiped fake gods, had idolatry. Esau blew this off, okay? He went and married, well, he had more than one wife, which that's a whole nother story. Even men that are known as godly men in the Bible disregarded that model that God provided for them in the Garden of Eden of only one man, one wife, and fell to cultural tendencies or pressures or whatever. That's a whole nother ball of wax. We'll get on back. Maybe someday we'll do that one. But Esau intermarried, and one of the wives he chose, I know for sure, was Ishmael's daughter. Technically, his cousin. Well, you know, anyway. So in Genesis 28, verse 9, it tells us this. Now, remember, Ishmael would have been the half-brother to Esau's dad, Isaac. Ishmael and his bloodline, God did bless because Ishmael couldn't help being born. You know, he was not in control of that, but the way that his birth was brought about, his was sinful. Sarah and Abraham thought they knew better than God's timing, and so they thought they would hurry His plan along, and that was not God's planning, not His timing. So God wanted to keep Ishmael and his bloodline separate from Isaac because Isaac was the one He intended to have later Messiah come to be born through. It wasn't because he hated Ishmael or anything like that. In fact, Ishmael became the father of a huge nation and all that stuff, but He did want to keep it separate. Esau would have known this, that he was to stay, but he just married whoever. The Bible also talks about his wives were a trouble for Jacob and Rebecca. This is not something that we are formed to. We tend to think we know better than God's plan, better than God's timing, so we can't really, you know, be like real critical. But we need to know that's where that comes from, that why God said He hated Esau. Esau clearly decided, "My way, my timing is much better than yours, God, so I'm gonna keep going with that." Very similar between the differences between Cain and Abel. Now, what does that have to do with the Book of Obadiah? Well, the Book of Obadiah is about the judgment that God is going to bring forth to the Edomites. The Edomites are the descendants of Esau. So from these two brothers, we have two nations, two people groups. Jacob became Israel and the Israelites, and Esau became Edom and the Edomites. Later, the Edomites are sometimes called, and I struggle with pronouncing this as Idum, Idumean, I-D-U-M-E-A-N, and later in the New Testament, we would know a famous Edomite, and that is King Herod, the one, you know, that told the wise man, "Oh, come back and tell me when you find the baby so I can worship Him too." Not. Anyway, that's why we studied this part, okay? So the Edomites were given a role model from the very beginning, from Esau, of a blatant disregard to God and God's way. So why were the Edomites facing such punishment? They went up against Israel more than once, too. We'll see this in Obadiah 1:10, and we also learned about that if you were with us in the Amos study, in Amos 1:11, okay? Now, David Guzik, I think I'm pronouncing that. You can find his info on Blue Letter Bible. He breaks it down. He gives you a little history about the Edomites, but let's, these are some of the transgressions they had against Israel. First of all, in the Book of Numbers, they're needing, the Israelites are needing to go through the land of Edom, no, excuse me, the Israelites are needing to go through the land of Edom to get into the promised land. So this is Moses' time. But the Edomites wouldn't let them, and they're like, "Okay, we won't even drink your water. We won't do anything. We're just gonna stay right here. We're not gonna cross the fields." They're like, "No, no." And they eventually come out with swords. What? So you can see that in Numbers 20, verses 14 through 21. So that's one of the first things they did against Israelites. The Edomites also opposed King Saul and were conquered under David and Solomon. You can find that in 1 Samuel and 2 Samuel and 1 Kings. And also, Edom at one time joined with Moab and Ammon to attack Judah. That you can find in 2 Chronicles 20. And all of these references will be in the notes that I will include as a PDF in the comment section. And so they did finally join with the Israelites, the Jews, in about 66 to 70 AD. They did band together to try to fight Rome. Rome crushed them, and we're gonna learn what happened from that in Obadiah 1:10 and 1:18. So I'm gonna put up a picture of a map here because for me, my brain learns better if I can also see a map to kind of see what, what the places I'm talking about here. All right. Now, let's get into the book about Obadiah and who was Obadiah. Obadiah was a prophet. Duh, you know, who was, who was this prophet? What did we know about him? We didn't know about him as much as we knew like about Amos and Jonah and stuff like that. Some speculate that he is the Obadiah mentioned in Kings and Chronicles. I didn't see enough validity to spend a whole lot of time on finding out who he was exactly because, um, the point is God writes the whole Bible, so I mean, all right, and I just didn't see this like something to spend a whole lot of time to camp out on. Then his name is cool, though. His name means servant of God, servant of Yahweh, all right? So that's pretty cool. He obviously really was a servant since God chose him to be a prophet. And I apologize. I know my eyes are all over the place. I'm sorry. Very new to this. The Book of Obadiah starts with a vision, and I, um, it is the shortest of the Old Testament books, and there's a debate among scholars about when this book was written. Again, I didn't see the need to really stop and spend time on that. The reason why there's debate is because the way verse 11 is written, scholars cannot agree on whether this is written as an historical account or prophetical, like it's a prophecy. So that would change the timeline depending on which way it is. Although I would love to know with certainty when it was written, it doesn't bother me not to know the date. I do know that what was prophesied in this book came to fruition, came true, came true, and recorded in history, even in secular history. Now, verse 1, let's get into the book. All right. Okay, so how to get my reading glasses from this? I'm gonna be reading from the Bible. Ta-da! And here it is. Normally, I read through the whole chapter at a time. I'm not doing it this time. I'm gonna just go verse by verse, all right? "The vision of Obadiah: Thus saith the Lord God concerning Edom, 'We have heard a rumor from the Lord, and an ambassador is sent among the heathen. Arise ye, and let us rise up against her in battle.'" Okay, so there we need to talk about some vocabulary. It says, "Lord God," and in the notes, when you open them up, you can see this a little better than I can explain it. But Lord is, the L is capitalized first, and the other letters are lowercase, but God is capitalized, all, all letters are capitalized, okay? So like we learned in Amos, when Lord only has the first letter capitalized and God is all capitalized, it means Adonai Jehovah. So Lord God, with this spelling, means Adonai Jehovah. Remember, Jehovah is the one, the aspect of our holy God who loves righteousness. Remember, that's why He was pretty, He's above all else, and that's why He was being used, that name was being used in Amos because the, the people that were having judgment, the Israelites, had been so full of idolatry, okay? Now, back to Obadiah, though, which is judgment against the Edomites, not the Israelites. Rumor means report, so it's not saying that, you know, it's not talking about gossip. It's, and the ambassador, of course, I picture in my mind an ambassador of like we have today in our politics, but it's more envoy, messenger, okay? So basically, it's saying a messenger is putting a call out to the heathens, to the Gentile people groups, to come together and go against Edom. If I were the Edomites, that would scare me, but it doesn't at first, if it ever did. I don't know if it did. It doesn't at first because of their pride, which we'll learn more about. Now, let's go into verse 2. This one's pretty tough. "Behold, I have made thee small among the heathen; thou art greatly despised." Can you imagine that? God is telling you, "Nobody likes you." Yikes. That's pretty rough, right? That seems so mean. Well, there's a reason why God's saying this to them. He is trying to wake them up. This whole book is a warning. God brings judgment. Yes, He brings, He's going to bring more judgment later, you know? But He's bringing judgment. He always gives warning. But He's being mean here, and what we would call mean, because He's trying to wake them up. Look, Edom, you're not real big, okay? And everybody around you doesn't like you. That's right. They don't like you. Well, in verse 3, you can see why He might have needed to, why He spoke to them. This is my personal opinion. This is why I think God spoke to him, to Edom, in this way. "The pride of thine heart hath deceived thee. Thou that dwellest in the clefts of the rock, whose habitation is high, that saith in his heart, 'Who shall bring me down to the ground?'" Pride. We see it throughout the Bible. If you're honest with yourself, you see it in your own heart. I see it in mine way more often than I care to admit. We can see so many verses in the Bible of what God thinks about pride. I didn't put a list together of all of them. I would like for you to, if you want to, do your own search on that. I did pull out one verse that I thought was so applicable to what's going on here in the Book of Obadiah. So Proverbs 16:18 says, "Pride goeth before destruction, and a haughty spirit before a fall." This is the Edomites. They are haughty. They're prideful, and they're going to fall. They're going to have destruction. Why is God so opposed to pride? Well, I have something that I call replacement practices, and pride is the seed of this thing. Replacement practices are attempts, man's attempt to replace God, God's way, God's word, with our own lame, feeble attempts to be our own gods. Now, you may say, "I'm not trying to be my own God." If you're trying to do things in your way and your timing, you are trying to beat your own God. I'm trying to be my own God when I do it. I don't think we would put it into words like that because that's uncomfortable to think about, but that's basically what we're doing. Please note, if there is any teaching that you're listening to or you're learning from that teaches that you will be on the same level as God Himself, or a, or you will become a God yourself, that teaching is 100% satanic. It is from Satan Himself. Here's some examples of replacement practices in the Bible and why God doesn't, you can see why God doesn't like them. That's why He's so upset with the Edomites. But number one, Satan wanted to be higher than God. You can read that in Isaiah 14. "Eve was attracted to being like a God to the point she had deadly disobedience." Not obedience, to be fruitful and multiply as some people teach. She had disobedience. God said, "Don't eat of that tree," but she chose to. That's in Genesis 3:6. "The building of the tower of Babel." Is it Babel or Babel? You know me in pronunciation. Anyway, Genesis 11:14, four, they were trying to, you know, "Let's build a tower. We can reach the heaven." Yeah, well, we all know how these examples turned out. Not well. Pride is the base of all sin. Now, the Edomites in Book of Obadiah, they had such pride. They had a lot of pride. In this verse that we're talking about here, about, um, "The pride of thine heart deceive thee. Thou that dwellest in the clefts of the rock," that verse is talking about the false security they had because they felt they had these natural defenses and where they lived that nobody could come and conquer them. Nobody's gonna bring me down, right? So they lived up high in rocky terrain. I saw some scholars say that, like Petra would have been one of their cities, and you can see the famous, you know, it's carved into the rock, stuff like that. Um, so this was a pretty, pretty strong defense, that fortress for you to live there, and so, yeah, it'd be hard for someone to overtake you. But God is not limited to the clefts of the rocks or high mountainous areas that He Himself created. Why would He be limited by that, right? This verse is so articulate to exactly what God, what pride does to us. Let me say that again because I messed it up. This verse articulates very well what pride does to us. "The pride of thine heart deceiveth thee, hath deceived thee." Lucifer's pride deceived him to the point that he was kicked out of heaven and now is known as Satan. Look at the people group who have claimed this month as their month, the month of June, and they name it pride. Pride is in their hearts, and the pride in their hearts is lying to them and telling them it is okay to have this behavior. It's not okay. Now, before we want to judge or criticize any groups around us, we have to remember, we also have, we all have pride in our hearts. And it can lie to us as well, and we can listen to it as well. The trick is not to listen to the heart. Jeremiah 17:9, "The heart is deceitful above all things, and desperately wicked. Who can know it?" The heart is gonna lie to you. If you're thinking with your emotions, if you're basing your religious beliefs and your political views on your emotions, you're messing up, and it's gonna hurt you in the long run, and I hate saying that. And that's why we can't have reasonable debates because one group's trying to operate on facts, and another group is operating on emotions. I'm not trying to upset anybody by saying that. We need the Lord to show us the truth because we don't know it, right? We need God's word to show us exactly who we are, our identity, and how we should live, and then not listen to the pride of the heart that we all have. We can't say just that group has it, just the Edomites, just this group. We all have it, okay? Now, these truths found in the word of God, they're applicable to all of us regardless of our backstory, our gender, our culture, our people group, anything like that. John 17:17 says, "Sanctify them through thy truth. Thy word is truth." So it's saying you need to go by the God's word because His word is truth. Today, in our culture, sadly, we've made truth be a very subjective thing. We'll say, "My truth. This is my truth." That is ridiculous. There is one truth, and that is the word of God. Romans 5:8, "But God commendeth His love toward us, in that while we were yet sinners, Christ died for us." This is how much God loves us, okay? And that's where we base our identity on, the fact that God loves us, that He went, that He was willing to die for us so that we could always be together in eternity. Not by anything that I've done, not by anything that I am, which I didn't have any choice in how I was born, not by our skin color, not by our culture, our people group. Those are not your identity. The identity is part of you for sure, but the identity of you is the fact that God created you and loves you. Galatians 1:10, "That ye might work, that ye might walk worthy of the Lord unto all pleasing, being fruitful in every good work, and increasing in the knowledge of God," increasing in the knowledge of God. I'm stressing that because in the past several years of my own personal life, I felt this was very important. Now, let's go back to the Edomites and their pride. They had pride that we've talked about in the place where they lived, their natural defense, okay? Um, so they boasted about this, that they, "No one can take us out because we live here. It's up high, and it's hard to get to, and we have all this stuff." And they did have, like the ancient city of Petra was known to have amazing defenses. It's a city carved into the rock, and it's only accessible by a very narrow canyon, about almost a mile long, which would be hard to bring a military presence in to conquer these people. That would be difficult. And at the end of the canyon, there is a spectacular city carved in stone, and it does seem like this would be really hard to conquer. You know, you can't burn down stone. Verse 4, let's get back to Obadiah, verse 4. "Though thou exalt thyself as the eagle, and though thou set thy nest among the stars, thence will I bring thee down," saith the Lord. So God lets them know what He's going to do because of their pride, and He's going to bring thee down. And don't forget, God can also decide that to do, to do that with us should we become so deceived by pride. Do we have a false sense of pride as Americans? Are we prideful of our defenses like the Edomites? Do we have pride in our own hearts? Now, God will not bring judgment or bring thee down if we repent of our pride. As a nation, we should do it corporately, and that's what it says in 2 Chronicles 7:14. "If my people, which are called by my name, shall humble themselves and pray, and seek my face, and turn from their wicked ways, then will I hear from heaven, and will forgive their sin, and heal their land." Now, that's talking to us believers. We need to be held accountable for this. We need to do this. But, and individually, we need to pray against pride, and the best defense against pride is to be filled with the Holy Spirit. And the best defense against pride is to be filled with the Holy Spirit. And if you're saved, you receive the Holy Spirit the moment, the second of salvation. You didn't have to wait to be baptized in the Holy Spirit or anything like that. You were sa, you were saved instantly. You have the Holy Spirit. And John three, verse thirty says, he must increase, but I must decrease. That's how we who are already saved can have a natural, a good defense against pride, be filled with the Holy Spirit. But those who don't believe in God, they can have a protection against pride too, by calling out to God for salvation. You don't have to go to a special church service. You don't have to have any special event happen. Romans ten-nine says that if thou shalt confess with thy mouth. The Lord Jesus and shalt believe in thine heart, that God had raised him from the dead, had raised Jesus from the dead. Thou shalt be saved, okay? That's our best defense against pride, is admitting that we are sinners and we need, we need God, we need Jesus. Can't do it on our own, alright? So at the end of this study, we stopped right there at verse four. We'll go forward in the next session. I know I kinda talked quickly. I was trying to make it to, so this video would not be too long. Thank you for joining us. I hope you can look through my, uh, stumbling speech and other things. I am not a professional. I don't ever claim to be professional, and, uh, if you want to know more information, you can email me. And I will get as much information I can to you. If you have a question I can't answer, I'll point you to someone I know who can. Thank you for joining us. I hope we'll see you next time as we continue in our Bible study in the book of Obadiah.